We can liberate equal justice for all.
What does it say? Get out.
Well, we can't stop them late because they're around in the morning, so they should be late.
Yeah, we need to take them all, throw them out when they get back.
I told you to get them outside.
You can start with that.
We got a fault.
Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to December second, twenty nineteen, New York City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is approval minutes from the number of nineteen, twenty nineteen meeting. Nobody's got any questions, comments, how they're written, need to ask for motion to approve.
Motion.
December second, just all in favor. Next item is resolution number twelve, people doing.
That's the resolution on.
Amendment.
Yeah, that would be a rubber.
Okay.
And I wanted to. I don't know if they're singing. I just wanted to point out that.
I'm gonna let Todd kind of pass this around, which I'll leave, which I know what he said. Todd, uh, he's asking if we got a rubber. Asking us to. Release funds. Security.
You know, we agreed after discussion that what we were gonna do, we were gonna keep the insurance first. We've got the assignment of insurance policy, and that's a hundred and something thousand dollars. And then the remainder of the balance as owed against the loan, would come from the CD and do a partial release of the CD over and above anything that needs to pay off the loan. So, when we did this, we signed an economic incentive agreement, we signed economic assistance agreement, and a security agreement. The assistance agreement said why we're doing it, and how we're gonna do it, and the security agreement says, okay, here's the collateral we want. So, what I've said in this resolution is that the economic assistance agreement was done on the nineteenth day of two thousand sixteen. I've said that the funds were borrowed from the state bank and trust, and that Hollingsworth and Company were making payments. And before we did this, we took a security agreement on two acts of equitable life insurance policies, and I named their cash value at the time, in addition that we got CD assignment. And then I referenced that Company and Hollingsworth have faithfully and kindly paid off payments due on said loan since this date, and based upon requests from Company and Hollingsworth, the city desires to amend the agreements while for a partial release of certain said collateral. And this is the, this is the most important part. Whereas the city shall execute an amended security agreement with the Company and Hollingsworth whereby the city shall maintain its full assignment of the two acts of equitable life insurance company policies listed above, and shall execute a partial release of the CD, and shall only claim a security interest in the funds in said CD in such amounts as may be necessary to fully pay the reducing balance of said loan after the offset for the cash balance of the life policy. That's what we agreed to, right? Okay. So, it will require the mayor, uh, and the bank, and Mr. Hollingsworth to sign a new security agreement, uh, on the assignment of the, of the policies. And we'll get that language worked out with the bank, where it's reducing the amount and, and but the, the first, the first place is the insurance, second place is the CDs. Okay? That's what this resolution does make. So, I don't need a motion to second one?
Yeah, I need to ask for a motion to pass this resolution, twelve fifty-one. Second. All in favor. Next item on the agenda is our EVAC, uh, CD membership participation. They don't have anybody here.
No, every year we, we let the employees purchase EVAC through the CD at a discount at the group rate. But we also purchase a plan for our employees. And that's what we really need to take action on, is if the CD is gonna still renew the employees portion. Let me see.
So, this is something that we act on every year?
I didn't know we paid employees, though.
The employees have the option to take it out for their family, but we, as a city, hold it on our employees, as a CD plan.
Just the employees?
And that, David, you remember the breakdown of the CD's portion? It should go in on that first thing.
Tells, uh, it's got a one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year, uh, membership participant, uh.
That's what. We'll save that.
Yeah.
And to the.
Are we supposed to have pages?
There, um, actually, you are one, one is for, you said, one is for buildings? And one is for vehicles?
Yeah, but that's all in one ordinance.
Right.
That's just procedure outlines, and the reason I did that is because that gives you, without having to read that whole long, long ordinance, that basically gives you. Yeah. Without having to read that whole long ordinance, that gives you a procedure outline for each individual thing, and it, and it lays out the ordinance, and what's a lot easier to read than just the ordinance itself. That's, that's just for information.
All this is, is what you, you added that to.
The new line?
Yeah.
So, we can move ahead now.
She's gonna look up the signal we paid last year.
See the change?
That's all the same.
They go up on their things?
That's what, that's what the office assigned, maybe I'm not much sure.
Did you say?
I don't, uh. I thought, I thought they did last time. Better status to put on, did send that in first.
I remember having one here last time.
That is.
They usually just email me that just by.
We pay for the employees, and then they decide they won't put their whole family in if they pay the difference. That's what they make.
Yeah, I didn't know we paid for it.
I don't know if they're paying, because I think they're more.
If the, uh, price didn't change.
I thought it'd been about, I think it's been that way probably about, uh, it was, uh, I know it's been that way, at least eight, seven, eight years.
Same thing, charges.
I got ten dollars per.
I still think there's another thing. I still think there's another thing with this. People say things that this is, uh, fair enough.
Does, uh, the, who, does the health insurance, the employees' health insurance? Cover it every day?
No.
It don't cover it down.
It pays a separate, what the membership does is if you're a member, whatever rate your health insurance pays, they accept that. If you're not a member and you use their services, whatever your health insurance pays, you have to pay the difference. That's the, that's the benefit of it for the, for our employees. And it's a. It's a tremendous amount. Yeah, I mean, health insurance doesn't pay hardly any in the helicopter bill. I mean, it's amazing. Well, I mean, he- health insurance will pay a different amount based on the type of injury, but for example, if you think, i- if at the time it's thought that you definitely need the helicopter, and you take the helicopter, and they take you to Birmingham or whatever, and the helicopter wasn't actually needed because you're not as in bad shape when they do their examination of you, health insurance won't pay as much. It's almost like, well, you could go over there and register, so, you know. But I mean, that's active fact. If you didn't know that at the time. But the benefit of EVAC is that if you're a member, they just take whatever your insurance agrees to pay, and they're done with. They don't ever come after you for the difference.
I recommend that the council approve it, and go ahead and, uh, pay the, we've paid it, I know the last five or six years, I'm finding it's way to continue to pay it. As an addition to their insurance, that we have the health insurance.
This is.
This is.
That's the, what we were, this is what the CD pays. This is actually what, so this is the amount. But for us to get discounted rates, we have to be a membership.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And either had to be another bill.
Yeah, but, uh, so. We've got sixty-five employees and units, twelve office stands, total of seven, one hundred eighty-seven office.
That's what I thought, and the rest of the, we get paid.
This is our parent.
That authorizes him to be a member of it.
I think that made a motion to go ahead and.
Second.
Continue to pay it, Chris. Second, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is breathing literal, it's, uh, number nine seventy-one. That's what Sandy passed us out, what she broke down, didn't it, Todd?
Yeah, that's just a procedure outline that I gave me on the next. That's a whole lot easier to understand.
Now, this is, this is just put in, into a complete form of what we had already discussed. Uh, we passed, last council, Todd just brought it back to us to approve it. I need to ask for a motion to approve it. Or, no, I want to see one amendment on that. To go and clarify some. Unless anybody's got any questions since our last meeting, or any comments to make, that you see might, not be as, you thought it would be worth, or needs to be worth. Not motion to Jamie, I mean, to accept this amendment to this nine seventy-one order. All in favor. Next item on the agenda is NACOC, city membership. Everybody familiar with what NACOC does for? They, they handle all the grants, CBG grants, and, uh, like the grant, we got the bus, the community center, the, only they've got. They keep the sprawl of what money comes down from the federal government.
Is that aging program in the, and then that's probably the mapping?
How much is it? Sixty-four fifty-four. Sixty-four one fifty-four.
Cost more than that, gets a matter out, wouldn't very, yeah, can't hardly do it.
So, I need to ask for a motion for Ken to go ahead and renew his membership with NACOC. Continue ahead, Tim made a motion, Jimmy second. All in favor. The next item on the agenda is Marion County Commission, EMA, communication fees. Are y'all familiar with what we pay for those, you know, those period time?
So, this is what you build, or that one, because you make. And then this is the communications part, and this is what we break out and make like that.
Is everybody gonna copy that?
No.
When our part on the, for the EMA is fifty-five hundred and twenty-five fifty-two cents, that's for the, uh, this new budget year for them, emergency management. And the part on the Marion County Commission side of it, based, all these fees is based on the population. They got us twenty-ten census, forty-seven hundred seventeen people. That's our, uh, forty, uh, the Marion County Commission's forty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-one thirty-seven. That's membership, and this year is breaking down nine and one.
And the communications is the jail.
Through the jail, communications.
I'm like.
We got, we don't really can do our own, you know, do our own communication.
Oh, no.
But it's, it's gotta, gotta kind of do it. Tim made a motion, and I need a second, empty second, all in favor of approving these. Fees, you pay this year out over a period of time, if I'm gonna pay one check, I'll check the other. Next item on the agenda is, uh, old business. Has anybody got any old business?
Parks interview, the first guy. Their recommendations of me, me keeping office.
So, they've got, they, they went through and picked, that's who they picked out. This is, I see why that's got to be. Anybody here from the park, anybody know?
Nearby of Christmas parade, they just asked if it could be presented if not table at the next meeting.
Kind of, which, the council, I kind of think what they kind of started doing is these new hires, that they want the people to kind of be here when we, you know, even with police officers and everybody else. So, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we council, I mean, council, that we table this at the next meeting. Don't say there'll be any problem with it, but I'd like somebody from the park, represent the park board, to present this person to us for. The sign's down, the first thing I say.
I didn't, I didn't.
I didn't pay.
I didn't take out the board.
But sign it down, and Rob got the letter for the two truck, he's got it in. Two days, a short week left, or whatever, but they, they, they said he's done. Truck that we had, that the personal gov deal didn't accept it, we set up, uh, we set up.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Amendment.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, I guess reserve, except reserve two thousand dollars, it, it, it made it to fifteen hundred dollars, got fifteen hundred dollar bid on it. And, and, and my recommendations to council is go ahead and take that fifteen hundred dollar bid for that. I don't, you know where the people's from, or anything, uh, we'll, which will be a little bit less, we'll get a little bit less, our charge is probably around thirteen, eighty, ninety, something, somewhere along in there. It's the second time to go around, and the local bid, what, about eight, eight hundred and something. I need to ask for a motion to accept that bid, all in favor. I might take care of that, uh. Yeah, they, uh, I've got, which is this old business that me and Rob, Rob, over here on this dumpster, this big tall dumpster. Occasionally, if, if any of our guys over there assist, which is gonna get with Todd, listen, I apologize to Todd, I'm not really getting to you on it, but maybe he's gonna make tell me to let Todd take care of it anyway, but I don't worry about speed. We're kind of having an understanding. Those guys are thorough there, and somebody comes in, and they're trying to get something out of the back of the truck, they assist them getting it out and putting it over in that dumpster, because it is high. If they've got, you know, if it's kind of heavy, or whatever, they're gonna fit it. Well, we had a, they had a piece of, of something, I don't know if it's a piece of wood, or or white wood, but one of our guys, they made it slip. It scratched a guy's tailgate, and I don't think no crack to tail light, or something. But, well, they brought an estimate, I always tell them, run the estimate by Rob, because Rob's over there and I wasn't over there. Rob witnesses to whatever. Rob, they took an estimate too, Rob, and Rob told them we'd pay them, that that wasn't, that, that much damage wasn't done. So, that, that's where we at, someone kind of, let Todd make the call, but it's, it's nine hundred, it's nearly a thousand dollars. I don't know that our guy just took pictures or not. But I didn't make the call to, uh, just, my department head says, you know, it's too much. I don't feel right when they say we're gonna pay it anyway, so I'm gonna kind of put it on attorney's back, or y'all's back one to tell me to pay it or not.
What's, what's, what's that saying, Mayor? No good deed goes unpunished?
Yeah, exactly. That is.
So, let me, let me ask this, Mayor.
Don't ask me that saying, because I tend to tell you, I say it all the time.
Somebody brings stuff in their vehicle, they pull up to that dumpster. We're helping them unload stuff from their vehicle to put it in that dumpster. And while we're helping them, a piece of what we're putting in there falls out and hits his vehicle, that, that stuff came out of, that he brought it down there, and did some damage to his vehicle.
Correct.
And he wants us to pay the damage to his vehicle.
Correct.
Okay.
And Rob, we're not necessarily, wasn't so much against paying for the damage, but when Rob says it was, it was excess, uh, it was, it was excessive, it was more being rolled up on estimate than actually how.
Oh, yeah.
That's what Rob said.
If we get one dead, Mayor, just one dead, it protects it.
Yeah, that's, that's just one idea.
If we gotta pay it.
Uh, I need to just let Rob, I mean, I said Rob, I need to let Todd. I tell you what, I'm not having.
If they start doing that with us.
I'll have it.
You got. Can you get it? Yeah, that would be great, if you do it right. But I do have to pick.
Thank you.
I found that in my cabota after, after mule day, I'm just now getting it back to the officers, from the officers. Something fell out apparently when he was using my cabota to drive him around. This is who do?
Yeah, I do too. Anything else I need to force, fast time, the feeders, they don't even bring us to feed the thing that's feeding them.
We're good. It's parade time. On that little incident, though, is there not a not responsible accident thing on the, or not responsible?
Sometimes stuff like that don't work, you know.
I was thinking of the same, I guess.
Thank you. Don't put that in, it's overtime, your salary.
About probably twenty-four or two.
Best I can remember, these photos, I remember seeing these photos in this.
So, i- is, is the issue, is the issue that the, the, the the estimate's too high, or is it issue that the estimate was for stuff that wasn't damaged in this incident, or a little bit of both, or do we know?
A little bit of both, I think.
I'm sure she has it, they probably still have it on. Right, and Keith, you're reporting for its own file.
I just, I just want to kind of bring it up, and I'll give, I think what we need to do is let Todd, uh, look over this to see if, and kind of, the reason I'm wanting to kind of bring it up is, from here forward, do we need to set a different, uh, you know, we've done. we've done real, I think, I think it's one of the better things that we did by putting that fence up, putting that behind the fence, out of liability reasons, and I think that was a good thing. And, you know, it's not to say that we need to revisit it now and say, well, we don't need to be helping put stuff out of the vehicle over into that, but it's kind of, attorneys have to answer that kind of stuff to me, because it's on city property. And that's, we put that dumpster out there as a service, uh, to, to the people. They, I think they pay a dollar, that part of the garbage bill is a dollar a month, or a dollar a year or something, to be able to do that, to use that dumpster for household, not household, but for debris. Because of landfill, and it being, you know, for things to get to landfill, I don't know, be a basketball, you know, thing, or not.
If it goes to that, it's their responsibility to put up the sign, and say, well, add your assistance. You'd have to ask for assistance.
He probably has a sign over there that says not responsible for...
I think they have a sign.
Maybe he does have a sign.
I wish he was using a piece of equipment. We worked, he was just being unloaded by hand, he was using a piece of equipment.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, he was using a piece of equipment.
The person, I want them to.
We need to, we need to, and kind of, you give us a guideline.
I want, I want to know how come he was using a piece of equipment. Did he ask us to do it, or whatever? I'd like to know a little bit more about what happened, because it wasn't, I thought it was just, we were just helping him, and something fell out, but apparently we was using a piece of equipment, and a piece of equipment, he claims a piece of equipment got up against it.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll kind of let you...
But I'd like to know.
Do a little research.
You know, did he pull up over there and say, hey, I need you to help me use that loader and help me get this out of my truck? I'd like to know all that, so...
Peace, peace with another one.
I pulled up there to...
Peace, peace with it.
Well, I pulled up there in the truck, got stuff I can unload, and I said, help me with that loader, and unload that, pick up, back in my truck, and I, if I can get my truck scratched, stuff gets on me.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
I hear talking.
Actually, I would prefer to get it standing in the air and just aim at it, then, because it will show up in color and everything.
Yeah, hey, I got a better picture, but technically, I have an hour to find it on my computer. Um, I don't know that I've got any other business. We got, Todd.
Everybody can wait and send your thunder. They emailed this to me, to me. I'll make sure. Email what stories, but you can give your cop for you.
What is it? Do you want that to be for you? Me down. I was going to announce that. Thursday, December fifth, twenty nineteen, they're going to have a reception at Tom Bigby's electric office. I don't, I don't really want to, they're going to hear from, you'll be hearing from Tom Bigby CEO Steve O, she crumbles from Robert O'Hara, US Department of Agriculture, Deputy Under Secretary for Rural Development, DJ La Boy. That's who, that's who will be speaking.
That's really good.
Huh?
Yeah, and the real secretary.
I don't know that they, that might be one of them.
Oh, that's a lieutenant.
Not announced. That, you know what I'm saying? But y'all excited to that, considering what it's at ten o'clock, Thursday morning, this Thursday morning.
I wrote up there last year with Chris, couldn't get back in the truck to talk about this half, so I wrote back, but who'd I write back with?
Is this something we need to, we need to think about? Oh, we've got a letter here from, from Leah, is what, Police College, Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. It's to all criminal justice service division customers. You want to speak on how, you want to talk about this, Brett?
Yes, it's, it's a, I got the email in October, question I remember, that if you have Windows seven on your computer, Leah, who we get, our Let's Technologies, our E-track computer, to run license, write UTCs, everything you can do. They're no longer going to allow us to have that service if we don't have Windows ten on our computer.
We have Windows seven now?
Yes, sir.
You're saying, you're, we need to upgrade those computers?
The, the software, this is, uh, for the, from Windows seven to Windows ten.
If, if what you got, is ours capable of being upgraded from seven to ten?
I should hope so.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I guess.
A lot of mine are on my iPad.
Because I'm, what I'm, what I'm looking at right now, and that's the reason I'm coming to the council, it's a little bit overrated, because if I'd have got it before the budget, I could, I could have put it in the budget.
Budget's a guideline.
Understood, understood.
You know what I'm saying, something's got to be done.
But it gave me, it would have gave me something to put in to go by. I mean, this is kind of, cannot believe that.
You've got to have it. I mean, you don't need to be without it, do you?
No, sir.
When's that going to happen?
January fourteenth.
Eddie, please, how many, how many computers you going to update, upgrade?
Uh, I can get by with fourteen, which is two thousand eighty-six dollars, just for, just for software. If it's the computers, eleven computers and three software updates, which eleven computers is eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars.
You're saying those computers are not compatible or anything?
Yes, and I'm hoping that they're compatible. I mean, we've had them for about nine years.
We all, everybody here, everybody here knows how technology changes constantly. I mean, it's going to continue to do that, and it's almost like Apple does intentionally.
And, and I, and I'll tell you, and I know you guys are probably sitting here, and I'm sitting safe, but they had already set up our asset forfeiture program that that money was supposed to be in. We were all expecting, the DA's office was saying that by the end of November, November's come gone. And it wouldn't even have to come to you if, if that was in place. And so right now, I'm looking at bare minimums.
If we, if we, I feel like a recommendation to approve this, but if it is, can pay us back out of sort of funding, if we need.
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, I mean, I'm going to get, I'm going to update computers, because I've got to. Those are going to start going down just one at a time, and I'd rather just go ahead and replace them all.
Nine years old, much of y'all use that?
Yeah, but they've been good computers. I mean, as, as much as they've been, as they go through in those cars, they've been very good computers.
So that's your end car computer?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to upgrade all this in here too, aren't you?
Yes.
That was just a get by, man.
And, and I'm hearing that they're doing this to a lot of other, not necessarily for the same thing, but they're trying to, other agencies are trying to, like Angie said, she got some notification on it, as far as their stuff. But ours, it just kind of, it, we either, we're either in business or we're out.
You know how to do that. Windows drops the support, I'm sure.
That's exactly what I'm...
Windows drops the support, so these agencies have, they have to do that, because they dropped that support.
It's no longer secure, so they can't, they can't guarantee it. So, I mean, they're, no, everybody's doing what they got to do, you know, but...
They don't give you a choice.
So it's actually Bill Gates' fault.
I just need to ask for motion to second to approve him to do what he's got to do to count.
I think so.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Yep.
Director Patterson, you say it's always...
Our meeting time, we saw, our meeting time, the next meeting time, when?
Five thirty on the schedule, I think.
Which back schedule?
Sixteen.
That's right.
Tomorrow will be the third.
Yeah, six days on the...
Nobody else in the other business, I need to ask for motion to all in favor, Bill. Anybody's got some question? Second. All in favor? Hate to be short and sweet, seem like I'm always forgetting something, I'm not going to keep us over tonight. Yeah, everybody needs to hang around. We're going to, we're going to light the Christmas tree up here when we leave here, the parade, I think. Brett, you're going to be up there at six thirty? What time are you supposed to leave?
Black night.
I think the parade starts at six.
So we're ready to get in.
I think they, I think that they start full night at sixteen.
Six fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Council must step out here and we go light the tree. I'm trying to, we're trying to make it more than just floating, you know, trying to make it a big deal, because it is a big deal for us. I mean, trying to, that might pretty be a... If we must step up here and do that. If nobody else has got nothing, I need to ask for motion, go turn. All in favor?